Yeah, for February 8th, that's the right, so we could do it at 7:00.
Okay, all right. So the Chair will entertain a motion to to continue the public hearing for the large-scale ground ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system at Pond and Sharon Ave until February 8th at 7:00 PM.
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Whittleton.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Gary, your opinion?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Our next item is also having to do with the the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system. This has to do with the stormwater management permit. And it is a public hearing. But I believe we want to continue this to February 8th as well. Is that not true, Rich?
Yeah, so the, yes, you do, but just need to have, you know, read the notice into the record and then you can vote to continue it.
Correct. Okay, so Chris, please read the public hearing notice into the record.
Sure thing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass GL Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section F.11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, regarding a stormwater management permit application for property located at 90, 92, 96, 100, 100R, Pond Street, and 12 Sharon Avenue, Norfolk, Mass. The applicant next grid in San Francisco, California, has applied for a stormwater management permit in conjunction with the proposed construction of a large-scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic solar array. The property is located in the C1 and C1B zoning district. Reference assessors map 19, block 69, lots 27, 61, 55, 58, 43, and 28. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Chris. All right, now, without having been read into the record, the Chair will entertain a motion to continue the stormwater management permit hearing until February 8th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Whittleton.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Gary, your opinion?
My opinion is aye.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda, I guess we can't get there yet, it's not 7:15. Let's let's talk about something else. What's the next item you'd like to tackle here, Rich, before we get to 7:15?
Well, I think if you were so inclined, you could probably do the lot releases for Norway Farms. I know Mr. Kane had sent you an email that he wasn't able to attend, but everything is in order in terms of releasing two more lots as being requested.
Okay.
We have the $4,000 is in the open space maintenance account with the HOA, so that's all set. And then the final $60,000 affordable housing payment is due, I think the sixth house is actually being finished. So once that is sold, the final $60,000 will be submitted to us for the affordable housing payment.
Right. Any discussion by board members?
Mr. Kane, this is in one of the first open space plans where it's gone through pretty smoothly as far as the fees being paid, the affordable housing money's being paid on time. So I think that's great. One less thing for us to deal with. So thank you, Rob, for that.
Indeed, indeed.
I will relay that to him.
And he sets a precedent. He sets a precedent for the town for future similar developments. All right, Chair will entertain a motion to release lots six and seven of the Norway Farms subdivision.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Whittleton.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Gary, your opinion?
Aye.
Thank you, Gary. Let's see. Let's review the minutes, get that behind us while we're waiting for 7:15 to show up here.
Motion to review and approve the meeting minutes from December 14th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. These meeting minutes were reviewed and adjusted by our assistant and are ready to go, I believe. So Chair will entertain a motion. Excuse me, Chair will entertain the motion made and seconded to review and approve those minutes. Mr. Whittleton.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Gary, your view?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All right. Are we 7:15 yet?
We are.
Yeah. 7:15.
Okay. This is, the next item on our agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for a site plan review for 228 Dedham Street. Site plan and special permit and stormwater management permit. We have received comments from the developers engineer and also most recently, in response to that, a letter from Beta, our technical representative here. And I have read that and found that virtually everything is in order, but there are a few items that we ought to discuss before we move on this. Rich, do you want to take us through this, or should I?
No, I think I would defer to you to go through and then I can
Comment as we go.
Yeah, comment, comment on each item.
Those of you who may have access to this beta letter, which is dated January 7th to address to Rich.
I will, I can screen share and display it.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Why don't you do that?
That's the one you just sent around today, right?
It is, yes.
They had like, they had four recommendations around conditions that I thought would be good.
Yeah, when you just touch on those, as well as a couple of other things. You're going to screen share there?
Yep, I'm going to screen share, just everybody see the screen?
Nope.
Yeah, there it is.
Scroll down to page four, if you would, please. I guess scroll up to page four.
Yeah, I gotta scroll up. Which item?
Z4, let's, let's
Apologize, sorry. Okay.
All right, so here we have Beta deferring to the planning board, and it really refers to the green belt buffer that's supposed to, between the property and the abutters. And the proposal, as you see in type there, is that one of the abutters get the the six-foot green belt screen and the other two for reasons of existing fence and existing type of business go with what's there. I asked Rich earlier in the day if we had heard from any of those three abutters, and we had not. So, Rich, what do you recommend we do to, to go forward with this as you write the decision?
So what? One option for consideration, if you choose as the board, is that we could condition it to have it whereby if somebody comes forward, the board could revisit the screening. I don't necessarily think there should be any issues because nobody's come forward, but sometimes you never know. And buffers can always be, are usually a critical piece of developments.
Yeah, I'd personally rather not leave that hanging out there. The time for abutters to speak up is during this last two or three months as we go through the process. I think leaving something open like that just can encourage some type of unfair bothering down the road for a different reason. So I, I think where the fences are up there, I think screening is a little bit overkill. And this business has been there, operating for a whole bunch of years. So I think the recommendations to just buffer the residential works fine for me, my opinion.
Comments from other board members?
There's reference in the beta doc about photos of the abutters properties. I don't see them included in that document. Are they located somewhere else?
Yeah, we, we have. I can share them if you want. I had, we went through it the last meeting, if you want to go back through them in terms of Rick Kudrow from United Consulting went through each abutter to show you the existing condition, but if you, I, it's up to, I can share them again so you can refresh your memory, or?
So this was the one with the concrete aggregate?
Correct, yep.
Okay, that's fine. We don't have to review it again.
Okay.
Both have a property that's commercial, existing commercial businesses, is that correct?
Yeah, everybody, all the, all the properties are within the C1 zone.
So there was there's one residential, which was the Hamlin.
Yeah, the only residence is the one that we're going to put the trees up for.
Yeah.
Well, it says here the Johnson property has both a contractor's business as well as a residence.
Yeah, so I guess to be more accurate, there are residences, but the residences associated with the business that they have. So Hamlin has the cabinet business, they have a residence there, it's the father who's there. The Johnsons, they live there and they have their business there. So it's you know, it's not, it's not purely a residence with just no commercial operation associated with the property.
No, nor is it a pure commercial either.
No. No, I get it. So I just threw that out as a suggestion, but you know, this is democracy, so we don't, we can just, if the consensus is pass over, then we just pass over, that's fine.
Gary Searle, any thoughts?
Not, not really. I think I'm indifferent. I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another on it.
Okay, well, I, I tend to personally to favor the view that John expressed, which is these public hearings have been open for a couple of months. The abutters have been notified. Correct, Rich?
Hell yeah, they have.
Yeah, and they've had an opportunity to come and view what we're doing, what the developer proposes to do. So I'm, I'm happy to let it stand the way it's written here. Have a different view? Okay, all right, moving along to the points that Gary raised, Gary Searle raised a moment ago, page seven, SW 13. Now, this is a condition that we have included in our decisions in other cases, so I think we should accept Beta's recommendation that we make it a condition of our decision. Any, any discussion to the contrary is welcome, but that's my view. Hearing none, then the next page, SW 15. Rich, you want to comment on this one, please?
Sure, we've we've gone back, back and forth in terms of just clarification, what was in there. The drainage that was the drainage system raised in the peer review by Beta is actually the town of Norfolk Drainage System. It isn't the state's drainage system, it's a priest. It, it's a drainage pipe for Shire Industrial Park. But it's a town drainage pipe. Discussions with DPW, their preference, and which I've spoken to Beta about, as well as Rick Kudrow, was to utilize a BMP and not a water quality structure. It's a lot easier for them in terms of DPW to it's not out of sight, out of mind for maintenance purposes. What's that? Was that me, or?
I don't know, I think it was just some feedback.
Okay, so discussions with Barry today, he was going to even try to pop on the line, but he had take care of the family, COVID, as you know, sitting there, not to disclose his family situation, but so the thought being we condition it in terms of choosing the option of the BMP, which I think Rick could speak to, and that's what was proposed anyway, was a swell.
Yeah, I like that myself, Rich. Would the state created this issue? I don't feel it's improper to be charging a private landowner with some buildup that's caused by the state's runoff. But I think that what the engineer has suggested should be adequate to take care of the problem. Hopefully, Phil agrees with that.
He is on the, he is with us this evening, so he could
We've discussed it, and it seems the consensus is to go with the BMP. Can you can you endorse that?
So, yeah, so I think it's, it's a, it's a case where this is a redevelopment portion of the site, which has no stormwater treatment associated with it. They are, I would expect the frequency of loads and unloads being increased. So it's typical that we have provided some sort of improvement relative to the stormwater runoff quality. And as evidenced by our site walk, there's a fairly sizable amount of sediment accumulation in the swell already. So I, I don't know what, I didn't see what was proposed as the BMP just for, so the water quality unit is classified as a BMP itself, but I understand what Barry's saying. He wants something open and visible. And I, you know, I, I haven't seen, I don't know if Rick has, has provided that, so.
Rich, Rick, you're here, can you comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so what we've, what we've proposed is for an upgrade of the swell. And the upgrade of the existing swell would consist of the construction of a riprap angular rock at the outfall of the existing pipe. And then there'd be three pooling areas that would be created by the installation of check dams, which would be constructed out of concrete curbing. And that would slow the velocity to allow for some settling time within the swell itself so that the stormwater would have, upon its outlet, would have an energy dissipator. And then three areas, three little pooling areas in which they could then get some additional settlement. And that would be the, again, in the reconstructed area of the swell. So we've had an opportunity to have Barry look at this. Unfortunately, Barry Barry isn't here. But his preference was that it be an open swell that they could provide maintenance to as well as opposed to, you know, a water quality unit such as a storm scepter type unit. So that's an overview of what we've proposed to provide for some additional TSS removal. We had originally proposed to also install hoods in the existing catch basin units so that they would now be, you know, deep-sumped hooded catch basins to provide for some sediment storage as well as some floatable separation with the installation of the hoods. So that's what we've proposed for an upgrade to the existing stormwater system. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody have any other comments? If not, then I think we can accept the proposal that Rick has put forward. All right, moving down the page.
That would get, that would get incorporated into the plan, the, what Rick just described?
It should, yes. Let's ask Rick.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's already incorporated in the plan.
Okay.
Like grading and improvements are shown on sheet four with details on the construction detail sheets. I'm not 100% sure what sheet off the top of my head, but basically the riprap pad as well as the construction of the of the check dams.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gary. All right, moving down to page one item to SW 16. This is a standard requirement that we have in our, in our decisions. This condition, agreed, Rich?
Yeah, this is something that we have done in other projects.
Yeah, all right. Next page, SW 21B. Again, another requirement that we put into our, another condition requirement we put into our decision, pretty much standard stuff. Any comments, any comments by anybody? Okay, then down the bottom of the page, SW 23. Again, another pretty much standard condition that we require in our decisions.
Correct.
Okay, next page, LA1. Now here, as I understand it, Rick, you've been trying to line up some trees with the neighborhood trees so that the thing looks aesthetically pleasing, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So LA1 requires there to be some landscape installation along the frontage. And there's a calculation within the zoning bylaws that, that identifies that. So what we've done is we've evaluated the existing frontage of the property on the, on the west side of the site, the southwest corner is an existing access driveway into the site, very close to the property boundary of the property to the south of this. And that driveway then extends into a driveway in front of a residence, an existing residence. And then from the edge of that driveway, where the parking takes place for that residence, heading to the north northeast is an existing lawn area that has an existing tree in it. I believe we provided picture, the pictures of that as well. But what we're proposing to do is to buttress those, that tree with two proposed trees and utilize the lawn area or the front yard of the house as the, as the landscape required area. You know, additionally, there's considerable amount of landscaping located behind that existing house into the northeast of that house around the swell area that provides a buffer from the roadway to the existing building. So we think that that is a suitable landscape for this project. Thank you.
Phil, have you reviewed their proposal?
Yes, yes, no, I think that's consistent with what we, what we talked about, yes.
Yeah. So why did you say that this should be deferred to the board? Is there some?
Well, I mean, I mean, it's limited to two trees, 6,000 square foot area and lawn. So I, you know, I, I don't have a definition of what landscaping is in my mind. So I just wanted your, your I'm, I'm not the expert on landscaping, so.
Yeah, all right, fair enough. Comment from board members? All right, hearing none, then we'll accept what the developer is proposing and move on. Down further on the page. U1.
You? Oh, they go past it?
It's on page 10.
Nope, it's on the last page, Rich.
Okay.
Past the stormwater comments. Below the LA1. You've got lighting and then you've got utilities.
Okay. The last thing before signatures.
I'm going the wrong way, aren't I?
Yeah.
It's all the way at the end, just, and then just back up.
Yeah, sorry. Going the wrong
Page, okay.
All right, sorry about going the wrong way.
That's all right, okay, here we are, U1. Okay. Town water be used in concrete, but the truck filling would take place within the aggregate storage building. Let's see, two things here. Number one, as I recall, the definition of the business anticipated as a result of this improvement on the property, is they didn't figure they were going to get a heck of a lot more business, it was just a matter of being more efficient. If that's true, then they're not going to be using any more water than they currently use. Number two is someone mentioned that they don't ship wet concrete, they ship dry concrete and add the water at the, at the point of use, but I don't know that that's true either. So anybody who can can help me out here would, would, I appreciate it.
That's my recollection as well, Walter.
Yeah, Rick, can you clarify that? I thought that would, they
Yes, I can. So, so the, the first statement is correct. And Sean Weber from Mixrite is on the line, and he can certainly confirm this. But what I'm told the process involves is the aggregate materials, as well as the water, are loaded on the truck separately. In other words, there's a specific water tank that will be filled at the site. And then the, and then that water will be introduced into the mixture at the site where the discharge of the final product will take place, which could be, you know, Boston or somewhere in Norfolk.
But the water is, the water is added to the tank at this site?
The water would be added to the tank on the truck
Yeah.
at the 228 Dedham Street site.
Okay.
It would not be added into a mixing of the concrete materials and aggregates until arrived on the site itself for where the for where the discharge of the concrete material would take place.
Right, you got it, thank you, thank you, Rick.
So that water's being put into those trucks today. And I will say that I have had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Al Finney from the, from the town of Norfolk Water Department. And we went over this plan, and we went over what's going to be necessary of Mr. Gentile for permitting through the water department for the expansion of this, what the, what the connection fees will be, et cetera. He did not express any concern to me about any availability issues or anything of that, that nature during that discussion. And he did have, you know, this review letter. So we don't anticipate there to be any issues, but there's certainly going to be additional separate permits necessary from the town of Norfolk DPW slash Water Department.
Right. All right, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that's the end of my review of this beta letter, which tells me that it's now time for Uh, which tells me that it's now time for. For Rich to go and write a draft decision which we can uh review and approve at the February meeting. Um, now presumably procedurally, we need to take a motion or two. So, Rich, could you outline what we need to do?
So for this evening, I would just ask you to vote to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Public hearings, and then uh I'll put together, as you mentioned, a decision, circulate to the board. Between now and the the February meeting, you can review it and uh. Hopefully, everything's in order, and then you can just vote it that night and then be done with it and well, done with the decision process.
All right, so with that guidance from Rich, let the chair entertain a motion to close the public hearing. For two twenty-eight Dedham Street Site Plan Special Permit and Stormwater Management Permit Applications. Do we have a motion?
I would give you the motion, but I was just gonna ask one more time. Did you is the last thing just before that task for any more uh public questions? Oh, all right. I know you did at the start of the meeting, but.
Sure, yeah, a fair point. Any more? Any public?
It is. It is a fair point. Anyone in the in the audience here care to comment or ask a question? All right, hearing none, then the chair will entertain that motion.
So moved.
So moved. All right, who has a second?
Second.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Monford.
Hi.
And Mr. Sterling.
I.
Our chair votes aye. Uh, Gary, your your view?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes up to twenty-eight Dedham Street. Until we see the draft decision which we can review next meeting.
Yes.
Our next item on the agenda is uh forty-five Lake Shore Drive Scenic Road Tree Hearing. Uh, Gary, Chris, you want to read that into the record, please?
Notice is hereby given that the planning board and tree warden will hold a consolidated public hearing under the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen dash C. Scenic Roads Act and Chapter eighty-seven, Section three, and Room one twenty-four at the Norfolk Town Hall on Tuesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty P M. To consider the application of Douglas Moore for the removal of a tree located within the street right away at forty-five Lake Shore Drive. Reference assessors map four block twenty-three, lot three. Information pertaining to the tree and the location. Subject of this application is available for the public inspection at the planning board office in Town Hall during the hours of nine A M. to six P M. Monday through Thursday.
Okay, so uh who's here to make the case as to why that tree needs to be removed?
That would be Blair.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, so I received an application. Uh, from Douglas Moore at forty-five Lake Shore Drive. Uh, requesting that a approximately hundred-foot-tall red oak tree uh within the towns right away. Um, be taken down. Um, there was a second tree. Adjacent to this one that came down from storm damage uh about a month, month and a half ago, which is making this particular tree unstable. Uh, and being that the one that is left here is leaning toward his house and over his driveway. Uh, Mr. Moore is concerned that it causes a safety hazard at this point, even though the tree is healthy. Uh, there is a reason of reason to suspect that uh there's a possibility that it could come down either with uh. For further weather or uh come down on its own. Therefore being a safety risk. So at this point, I have uh no issue with uh with proceeding with that.
All right, um, comments and questions from board members? We, yeah, there it is. We saw we saw a picture earlier and and Betsy or or Rich has put it up.
The the tree on the left-hand side is the one that is now uh missing and gone from uh storm that we had a little while ago. It took down some wires and the part that's on the right-hand side of that photo there is the part that remains.
Right, okay, understood. Thank you. Comments from board members? Questions? Uh, anyone in the uh in the audience care to ask a question or make a comment? Hearing none, then uh. I presume we need to take a motion to accept the recommendation of the DPW director to remove that tree. So Chair will entertain that motion.
Oh, move.
Second?
Second.
All right. Motion is to to uh remove that tree, which is potentially a safety hazard. It's on town. Right of way. Uh, any further comments or discussion before we vote? Hearing none, Mr. Whittleton?
Aye.
Mr. Monford?
Aye.
And Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, and your opinion, Gary?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Story from Emperor.
All right, I think.
We have, I think, to wait a couple of minutes for the seven forty-five.
A minute.
A minute, okay. The only thing I can think of to fill that minute is a discussion about our May tenth meeting upcoming here.
Oh, yeah, that's a, yes, yep.
Happens to be on the the evening that uh the town Springtown meeting will be held, so we need to adjust that date. Betsy, do you have a recommendation?
Let me pull up my calendar here, Walter. Um, do you want to go the following week on May seventeenth?
What's the what's the the board board members say? Seventeenth look all right to you?
The select board be there on seventeenth?
Um, they very well could. Do we want to do another night?
Go in the other direction? The third?
Yeah, could.
Is is that interfere with town election?
Oh.
It's an election night and the seven the select board would meet on the third or the seventeenth.
Okay, thanks, Blair.
Looks like we're gonna have move it to another night in it in the week.
Sure.
Do you want to do Monday the ninth?
I could do that.
I can do that.
Sound good?
Going once? Going twice?
Chris, are you good on that night?
Yeah, I'm just debating. Um, ninth with the town meeting after that on the tenth, uh, whether or not. I can get a hall pass for that one.
Yeah. We could do the sixteenth if you want, right? Following Monday?
I'm fine with the sixteenth, more fine with the sixteenth than the ninth.
Walter?
But.
Sixteenth is fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move it from the tenth to the sixteenth, okay?
Sounds good.
You might have to change the the November one, too, I think, right? Is that?
Right, I have a question mark there. Maybe when we get a little closer, we can um.
Okay.
Think that it might be the fall town meeting, or is that was that election? I can't remember.
It's far enough away that we have time to adjust it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Agreed.
Thank you, everyone. All right, let's go back to the agenda. It's now seven forty-five or. And we have a public hearing uh for MacArthur Avenue Definitive Subdivision. Chris, would you read that into the record, please?
In accordance with the Town of Norfolk zoning bylaws, the Planning Board rules and regulations in MGL Chapter forty A, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on. Tuesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven forty-five P M. in Room one twenty-four in the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. On the application of Franz Burke of Kingsbury Homes Limited for LTD uh for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled roadway improvement plan, MacArthur Avenue. By GLM Engineering Consultants Incorporated, Hollison, Mass., dated December eighth, twenty twenty-one. The applicant is seeking to construct said road for access to one existing lot on MacArthur Avenue off the end of Hunter Avenue. Reference assessors map four block twenty, lot fifteen, in the R two zoning district. Application materials are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours, nine A M. to six P M. Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Chris. Rich, would you put that with the drawing up or one of the drawings is a couple?
Sure, yeah, let me uh. Go into the. All right. Is that pretty viewable? Or you want me to zoom in?
No, that that's a that's pretty scroll. Yeah, that that's.
The one on the right?
Yeah, I can go a little more. You want me to go a little little closer?
Yeah.
All right, hold on, let's make adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, this is Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering. If I could share my screen, I have that colored.
Oh, okay.
For heaven's sakes, let's see it in color, yes, by all means.
Well.
All right, let me just uh, oh.
Rich, you're gonna get out of there, right?
Yeah, I'll give you uh. All right, you should be able to do it. I'm a co-host.
Are you all able to see?
Yeah, it's a little better.
That's good. That's good, yeah. All right, why don't you, since you put it up there, why don't you speak to it for starters?
Yes, so my name is Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering, and uh we have prepared a. Uh, roadway extension plan to create a paved turnaround in front of uh the five lots on MacArthur. Uh, to provide access to this these lots here. So these are all combined. Uh, they are contiguous. They're thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty square feet. We're proposing to construct the single-family dwelling and uh to right now the access is off of Hunter Ave. The end of the existing big pavement is right here. This is an unpaid street on MacArthur. And we were posing to create a hammerhead. The existing pavement is twenty-five feet wide. Excuse me, twenty-four feet wide, and we would create this uh turnaround that we would create also is twenty-four feet wide. There would be Cape Cod berm around the uh the limits of it. And our driveway would sit in this area right here. Uh, the driveway that comes up to it on Hunter Ave is uh three percent, and it remains three percent across the. Across the limits of the the roadway itself. There'll be a water service that comes in off the end of the road. But other than that, those are the only things that we are changing. There is uh one tree that's in the middle of this that will come down. You can see the. Uh, there is no road created here, but it's there's a opening on both sides. You can see the limits of the. The uh drip edge of the trees uh in this area here. I have a cross section. Of the roadway. The roadway would have a twelve-inch processed gravel subbase uh created in. Six-inch layers compacted. There'll be a four-inch dense graded crushstone base on top of that. With a two-and-a-half-inch binder and a one-and-a-half-inch finish course. Again, the Cape Cod berm on both sides. And we have a cross section. Of the the roadway itself. This is coming up. This is the existing center line. Uh, coming across, there's just some very minor grating um as it goes through. This area here. And that's really the limit of uh what we are. What we are creating.
Thank you. Um, Rich, have we got comments back from the fire department in terms of their ability to use this? To turn around uh fire apparatus if they need to?
I have sought their uh opinion. I haven't heard back yet. I know um. You did get comments from DPW um regarding this proposal. I'm sure one of them, well, you'll get to, but um one of them is the recommendation to actually make this, or at least have an easement to make it public, so it's available. To the town to maintain and keep clear, since it's at the end of Hunter Ave. I think Blair might still be with us, but if he wants to chime in. I will uh. I will. Press upon the fire department and see, hopefully, they can give me a, I know it's the first public hearing. Um, if you want, you know. I don't have anything tonight to report from the fire department.
Fair enough, okay. Have you sent this? Have you sent this to our engineers to take a look at it?
I did not send it to the engineers. I just sent this through DPW to take a look at.
Yeah, uh. On the pavement area, MacArthur is a dirt road.
Yep.
And it's a it's a forty-foot right of way.
Hmm.
And Hunter Ave is twenty-four feet of pavement. I'm trying to read the numbers here. And where's the new pavement on MacArthur gonna be? Also twenty-four feet?
Correct, yes.
Are there other houses on MacArthur?
Not uh not in this section, no.
How far down is the nearest house on MacArthur?
So I, so here's MacArthur that runs. This is a locus map that's not very clear, but. MacArthur runs through this area here.
Yeah.
Undeveloped through here, uh, but there's and there's a house here, but it comes off of this road, so there really are no houses on this. Uh, access of MacArthur.
We just make sure don't we don't want to miss something in case MacArthur gets developed and those other possels. That's why I think the engineers should at least give us an insight into their thoughts. What about the other runoff of the stormwater? Where's that going? I know it's all. Pitching down, but what about from the other side of MacArthur?
It's all, uh, you say it's all um. Going down the hill towards the uh. Down the hill in this area here. So we have a Cape Cod berm so that it doesn't head off in this direction. Um, right now, it goes like this, this way, and like this, existing conditions goes this way.
What what about Hunter Ave? Is it is it is the stormwater just go down Hunter Ave?
Yeah, there's no, to my knowledge, there's no stormwater in Hunter Ave.
I understand, but it's paved and it just, what's the pitch going down Hunter Ave into that newly created intersection?
Coming this way.
What's that?
It it goes uh down towards uh, it goes down this way. We're going uphill here slightly.
Oh, okay. So you're coming up to a peak and then going down on the other side?
So then, yeah, so what we're doing is we're we're heading it this way and this way.
I see, okay.
So that it's not coming back down the hill. We've got a crown in this area here so that it goes. Keeps going this way and doesn't come back down Hunter.
Yeah.
Looks like it all goes to the right, though. The left side is two oh two. I can't see any.
Two oh two, it goes two oh two, two hundred, one ninety-eight, so it goes down this way, and then it also goes down this way.
Okay.
Is Blair still online here?
Yes, yeah, John, I'm here.
Hi, hi, Blair. Do you think it uh, just for the fact there were somebody houses and there may be more? Should we have the engineers just do a a cursory review of the stormwater and make sure we're not missing anything?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem, John. You know, there's, I don't think you're gonna create a lot of stormwater there, but you're right, if uh. At some point, they decide to tie that in, tie MacArthur in all the way down to the bottom of the hill, it can't hurt to take a look at it.
Well, they're spending so much money paving this whole intersection. If there's any keys as far as the elevations of that. It'll help down the future. It'd be nice to know that now rather than being stuck. When someone else goes to develop an abutting property. That's all I'm saying. I don't want to have them spend any more money. But maybe we could instruct uh Beta to just do a uh a limited review on just uh the drainage here.
Absolutely, John, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree too, John. Let's let's do that. Um.
Are you actually driving over the berm to get into the proposed drive?
It will be modified in a, in a way so that it can go over the driveway. But that we're not channeling, we also don't want to channel all the water down the hill in front of a house.
Yeah, I know that, but I just didn't think the berm would, an actual berm would survive driving over it day after day.
You're not supposed to have a berm in front of a driveway.
Well, it won't be, it won't be a complete berm. It will be a change in elevation so that it just doesn't, we're not just channeling all the water straight downhill.
I'm only asking because it's shown.
Yeah, you want to make sure on the Hunter Ave side too that the berm on those two radius is enough to hold the water that's running down. And I'm not sure if, if changes in elevations or size of the berm would help or not, but that's why I think a professional should take a look just to make sure minor changes might not be needed for the future. That's all.
In regard, in regard to what John mentioned a minute ago, which is a potential future development of lots on MacArthur, could you go back to the locust map? It's the one that, it's the only one we have, I guess, that shows the various lots. All right, now point out to us which lot we're talking about here. That's this one here, right? Yeah, okay. And what do you know about the adjacent lots?
I don't know a lot about the adjacent blocks except their frontage, their driveway access comes from other places than MacArthur. There's a lot here that fronts on MacArthur, but it comes from another location. There's another lot here that fronts on MacArthur, but they come in off of another, off of Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah.
And the same with this, there's a, you know, houses here, but they get their frontage, I mean, their access off of other driveway.
So, from what you've said, it looks like there's a lot on either side of the locust property that potentially could be developed. Is that right?
There are, I'm not sure. There's a lot of wetlands on this one. I'm not sure what the it's possible. There are, yes, there are a lot, at least one lot here. I don't know if it's part of this house or not.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Blair, you want to mention, again, your request for an easement?
Yes, Walter. So we, Barry and I had looked at this pretty extensively, and there were a couple of issues here, obviously, to maintain, to maintain this new parcel here. And the second issue would be that I did have a primary concern with heavy vehicles and to ensure that there's enough base in here, and maybe the engineer will want to take a look at that as well. I'm not sure what the subsoil is in that intersection, but that intersection is gonna take an awful lot of heavy traffic from both plow trucks and fire trucks, having to turn around with nowhere else to go there. So not knowing what that soil is like underneath, we really should have easements and a really good look at the subsoil.
Yep, okay, understood. Thank you. Anyone here from the owner's perspective who wishes to comment on anything or ask us a question?
Yes, I have a question if I could get involved here.
Can you identify yourself, sir?
I can, yes. I'm Mike Ferrera. I am in Butter. I live up at the end of Hunter Avenue. I've spoken with Mr. McCarthy any number of times on this matter. I'm not sure exactly how far the information I'm looking at right now has been disseminated. It's this whole area, this road was technically abandoned by the zoning board back in two thousand and five at the request of the DPW at the time, that was Mr. Vito, who was the Director of Public Works. And it's for a lot of the reasons that you folks have just enumerated. It's the ability to get heavy equipment, fire and safety up and down that road. I won't bore you with reading all of this memorandum, but I will refer everyone here who will eventually be voting on this to do some due diligence. It's case number two zero zero five dash fifteen. And there's quite a detailed amount of paperwork involved, meeting minutes. The zoning board unanimously voted to abandon MacArthur Avenue. We're looking at sixteen years ago now. And again, that was at the behest of Mr. Vito at DPW. So I, again, I've spoken with Mr. McCarthy. I know we're having this meeting tonight, and that's what this is for. But I'm not sure why the history of this is not front and center before we get too much further down the road here.
Well, as I understand it, the proposal is not to develop MacArthur Avenue, but just to provide access to this potential new home.
Understood.
And just provide a turnaround there so heavy equipment can, can get in, do their job, and turn around and get out if they have to.
We are talking about other lots on MacArthur Ave, though, and whether or not it behooves, you know, this road being paved to that extent up at the end of it. But above and beyond all that, again, zoning has already voted unanimously to abandon this road. So I'm not sure. You know, it's MacArthur Ave still in paper, but it's really not there anymore.
Well, as I see it, we're not being asked to support the development of MacArthur Avenue. We're just being asked to provide access to that home and a turnaround on the right-of-way of MacArthur Avenue. So Rich, Rich, can you tell me whether the
Sure.
The right-of-way that MacArthur Avenue was represented on those drawings we just looked at exists? Is it, is it still town property?
So just to clarify a couple of things, it's not, it is not town property. It's, it's a private way that was laid out. The original subdivision was laid out, those lots around Populatic Pond goes way back early nineteen hundreds. In terms of the process of how it got here today versus where it started, Mr. Ferrer, and he's right, he had contacted me with that case study for his, his property on Hunter Ave. We took, Attorney Cannon had prepared an opinion that these lots were grandfathered lots in terms of zoning, which was provided to the building department as his only enforcement officer. They reviewed those documents, referred out to town council. And the opinion was back that these lots were grandfathered. And what they're intending to do is to provide physical access to this property for the one home to be constructed as a roadway improvement plan. The town, the ZBA, while I understand what was said, or at least what was voted on, they actually don't have the authority to abandon a road, so they really well, I know they vote that, but they didn't have the authority to do it. I understand, you know, from the comments from the former DPW director as well. But it's there's a process to go by that, that didn't, that process didn't occur. And similar to Priscilla Ave, as you know, which is in the same area. Several years ago, you had had an applicant before you that had pre-existing lots. They came before you as, with a definitive plan for a roadway improvement plan for those two, for some house lots. So it's, it's really identical process here. They're going through this process in order to be able to obtain a building permit to put a house on it.
Rich, who owns, who owns MacArthur Ave if the town doesn't?
It's the budding property owners. They own to the center line.
They each own to the center line?
Yep.
So how does that work out if they're gonna use part of that extension for the driveway?
The driveway, the driveway is on the lot for where the proposed houses are.
So that intersection is owned by the house, which is being proposed?
No.
At the middle of MacArthur Ave?
So MacArthur Ave is private, that, not, not Hunter Ave?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get to to, I, I understand that if it's a paper road, he still writes to, to use the lots. We've been through that before. But wouldn't the town still own the paper road by eminent domain or something?
No, you have to, you have to vote to accept it.
The lot owners on either side own fifty percent of the road?
Correct.
So do any of the lot owners own fifty percent of this land area where the driveway is going?
You don't mean driveways. I think you're being turned around the hammerhead, don't you, John?
Well, the intersection that's being created between.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'm pretty sure I'm out there.
That's my question, because if MacArthur Ave is still a paper road, and we're using a twenty-four-foot section of MacArthur Ave to connect to the house, who owns that section of MacArthur Road? Is it the abutting homeowners on either side or landowners?
Well, one clue we might get is to take a look at that drawing again. See where the, the lot line for the proposed new house exists relative to the question John has raised here.
And I do know in the past, if the town is in favor, they can take the property by eminent domain since it's been abandoned.
Okay, so it looks like I'm not sure. Where's the property line to, to the left side of this drawing? Where's the property line for the new proposed home? Is it between the two shades of green? Or is it over to the left somewhere?
So yes, she's, so Joyce is pointing.
Okay, so the frontage covers all the way there. So everything in the, in the hammerhead out to the center of the hammerhead belongs to the fellow who's proposing to build a new house, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
What about the opposite of that center line?
Other side.
But the other side isn't.
Conversely, conversely, I would on out to the center line from the other side.
Yeah, okay.
On the right side of the hammer.
Yeah.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Who, who is this speaking?
It's Edward Cannon on behalf of Mr. Burke, the applicant. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's correct in terms of the private way, but the applicant does have the right of access across the whole of the way, and so has the right to make those improvements for access purposes. That doesn't translate to ownership, but does translate to as any right of access, that person has the right to maintain that right of access, and that's what's happening in this instance.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't get to get, I didn't get to make that point. That was next. But anyway, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Now, having said all that, in terms of Mr. Ferrer, if he doesn't want to turn over his rights to his portion of it, then we wouldn't be able to accept that section of it. So, which was a similar situation, which we haven't been able to resolve with Westfield Drive. So that you know, that could present an issue, but.
Yeah, if I may, that, that's not a problem for the applicant.
No, not.
I would, and I would suggest that what the applicant is proposing is actually, the idea of having professional review makes a lot of sense, but what he is proposing is actually an improvement over what's there now, because if emergency vehicles were to go up to Mr. Ferrera's house now, there is no place to turn around. And so this does provide well, you know, we'll certainly have the fire department confirm it, but you know, what we believe to be more than adequate turnaround space for emergency vehicles.
Mr. Ferrera's property is in the lower right, I presume? Is that, that?
That's correct.
Right, okay, yep, yep.
Yes.
Is, is the gentleman, Mr. Ferrera, online with us this evening?
I'm, I'm still here. Yeah, no, I've, I've spoken previously about this, so yes.
And, and are you in favor or are you objecting to what is being proposed?
Um, I really, I'm, I'm just actually just bringing to light again what I've spoken with Mr. McCarthy for a number of times. I brought it before the Conservation Committee, which voted on this initially back in August. Everything that I'm looking at as far as like the information from this case file is that this road has been abandoned. And the and again, we're still talking about MacArthur Avenue like it still exists. But the zoning board, the zoning board unanimously abandoned it at the request of the DPW. The DPW does not want emergency vehicles on that road. They do not want to have to maintain, or they did not want to have to maintain it, you know, for plowing or whatever. That's my hope.
Fair enough. Okay, but I'm kind of waiting for your, therefore, therefore we should not go ahead with this, or therefore, just be aware of it as you go ahead with it. I'm, I'm not clear what your position is.
Well, I mean, my position is I would prefer there not be a house there, but I am, you know, I
I, I think
My intent, my
DPW, your director, being unwilling to run equipment up there, that probably was true of the former DPW director, but the current one who's sitting here with us this evening is, sounds like he is supportive of plowing that hammerhead so that the fire trucks can get up there if they have to. And I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, Blair, or you're willing to say whatever you wish to say.
Yeah, I have no issue with it. I think as it is now, it can be tough, especially if we have, you know, a pretty good snowstorm there. It can be a challenge to get in there the way that it is. So I think it'll certainly be a, an improvement from an operational perspective.
Right.
As far as snow removal goes, and we just went through this, this past week, the snow essentially just gets dumped at the end of Hunter Avenue. Obviously, there's no reason to not, or no reason to put it anywhere else. If this hammerhead does get built and this house does get erected, how is this area going to get plowed out? Like, where is the snow gonna go in the hammerhead? Are we just gonna dump it at the end of the hammerhead on either the left or right side, and that's the end of it? Because it still keeps MacArthur Ave as impassable.
Yeah, I think, in my opinion, you would try to put it on the downhill side of the hammerhead so that as it melts, it doesn't create a slick spot as the water trickles down over the, over the slope. So if the elevations are correct on the plan, I would say that you try to plow it to the right-hand side.
And let it melt. Sure, sorry. So all the snow that's mounted now where the driveway for this residence would be, and the house will eventually be to the right of the driveway, all that snow will be this mound at the end of the right side of the hammerhead, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So this, this hammerhead has to be built to town road specifications, which is another reason for the engineer, because if there are any organic soils or anything like that, they're all gonna be removed. So the, the hammerhead is all built just as if it were a roadway. So when heavy equipment goes up there, there won't be any issue. And as far as the past, Mr. Ferrera, I think the both boards you're talking about did things without any jurisdiction. That road was there from a subdivision. That stays there in perpetuity. If somebody wants to access their property, they do have a right to, but they do have to make it safe. And I think our building inspector already went over the, the position of that paper roadway, which we've encountered a couple of times in the past, but my only concern is just to make sure that Hammerhead is built and the connection to his private lot in town specifications with the proper runoff, that's all. And an engineer will, Joyce, do you have a cross-section of the, of the hammerhead roadway and what the soils are like?
You're muted. We can't hear you.
No, we did not do a test pit in the area of the road itself. But we do have cross-sections of what the road base was.
So you're gonna have to do some test pits to find out how that construction's gonna take place.
To your point, Mr. Weddleton, part of the disposition of this case from back in two thousand and five was that if these lots did need to be accessed, that it should be pursued through the further development of Lake Shore Drive. it should be pursued through the further development of Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah, but that's got nothing to do with the ZBA's jurisdiction. Just a planning board matter, not ZBA. So I don't know what they were doing at the time, but it had no legal authority.
Are there other points that the board would like to raise or questions in this proposal?
No, I think, Walter, I think it's a, it's a nice little project. I think he has a right to build it. And then as long as it's built, so down the road, if anybody else wants to develop the land abutting it, it probably will be, because there's a nice pond right there nearby. I think that as long as that Hammerhead is built properly and the storm waters handle, I think it's fine.
Yep, all right. Anyone in the audience care to ask a question or make a comment, other than this gentleman who has already done so? All right, hearing none, then.
Just a quick question. Mr. Ferrer, do you know, is anyone actually using MacArthur Avenue for access to their home? I'm just looking at the GIS maps. It looks like actually your house is close to it and maybe the one on the other side of Hunter. But do people use that to get in and out of their driveways right now?
It's muted. No, never. The only folks that are using that road with any consistency are the Amazon delivery trucks, because it's still showing up on their GPS. But the other delivery services have abandoned that road themselves, but Amazon, whatever they're using for GPS, it's still there. Half of the drivers get to the end of the road and say, no way, and then some of them are more daredevil, I guess, and they just give it a go.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
None of the locals use it.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay. Nobody that lives up here uses that road to access their property. You'd damage your vehicle if you did.
All right, thank you. All right, Chair, we'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on seventy, on MacArthur Ave, definitive subdivision until February eighth at seven thirty?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to check with Joyce to see if there's some work that I think she'll need to do. I just wanted to make sure that that would be, give her enough time to do that.
I think we'd like to give that a try and see what we can do. I think that would be fine.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for interrupting.
All right, well, even if it was not sufficient time, we could continue to the following meeting. All right, so Chair is looking for a motion to continue the public hearing until next meeting.
Second.
At seven fifteen?
All right.
He was asking, was the time seven fifteen?
We can go seven fifteen, I think, Walter.
That's what I thought we said, yes, seven fifteen. Sounds good. Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Monford.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. And Gary, your opinion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you. I'll thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too.
We'll see you on the air. Thank you.
Be healthy.
Goodbye.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is our fire station update. Who's here to speak to that?
Hi, I guess I'll jump in. Sorry. I'm Ron Lamar. How are you? And I just want to let some folks know that we're on.
I'm on, Ron.
Okay. All right, so if I can.
Give us your address, so we everybody knows where you live in town.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm the architect working on the project for the fire station.
Okay, fair enough.
Apologize for that. And so I don't live in town, but I know that Blath Robinson is on the call and Rich McCarthy is on the call. Other members of our team are also on the call. And what we wanted to just present tonight, if I can share my screen.
You could call, I'll make you a co-host.
Okay, thanks. One thing we'd like to talk about is the schedule going forward. I know you all asked for that last time we met informally. And the schedule going forward is we would like, if all things go according to plan, knock on wood, we would submit to you prior to your June fourteenth meeting, we would submit to you a final set of plans for formal review.
Okay.
And backing up from the June fourteenth meeting, I would ask, is there a third-party reviewer that the town uses that you would like us to submit the drawings to? As part of the submission?
With that information?
Yeah, so you would submit it to our office, Ron, and the Land Use Department, then we would send it to the third-party review.
Okay. Do we know who the third-party reviewer is?
Beta group?
Beta group, okay. So then backing up from there, we'd like to meet with you two more times, one on May tenth and one on March eighth to share with you progress of the project and to basically provide lots of information and get some of your feedback and comments. So as we go along, we don't present to you a final submission filled with information that you may have questions or comments about, or even reasons to deny it.
One comment, we just changed our May tenth meeting because of a conflict with Springtown meeting to the sixteenth.
May sixteenth, okay, that works. And along those same lines of sort of having some questions, I don't know if you can see my screen well enough. The one thing we talked about last time when we were here was this western side of the property abuts the church. We are actively pursuing contacts with the church to talk about what we can do in terms of of not having either the setback or the green belt. Because as you see here, we are trying to get an access drive within that fifty feet. So one thing that came up during our review was that under D dot one dot C of the regulations, the use regulations, it actually states that the bylaws shall not prohibit or limit the use of land for a religious or educational purpose. And so you asked some questions last time about whether or not the church was actually in compliance with the R two zone and/or the B one zone. And we don't know, we have not investigated that, but we did find within the ordinance and the bylaws that the site's not restricted. So along those lines, we'd like to ask the board's opinion about if the church is actually not restricted by the bylaws, if in fact that property line, given that this is the proposed fire station project of municipal use, you know, if we would need that buffer, because they've certainly not sort of developed it, if you will, in compliance with the residential or the business zone.
You're sort of working around an issue with abutting property, but unfortunately, the bylaw, which is, you probably realize, we have no authority to change anything about it.
Okay.
Whether it be the distance or whether it be how you landscape it, that's a regulation is voted by the planning board with a majority vote, it's put into effect. A bylaw is voted by two-thirds at town meeting. It's a whole different type of law. So basically, regardless of what the church is or their standing, as I see it, of the fifty-foot green belt, you can apply for a special permit for twenty feet of it, and the other thirty feet must be maintained and landscaped according to the bylaw, unless, of course, as we talked about before, you had a zoning change. And of course, the great irony in this whole thing is, Ron, where the church has put drainage on the lot line.
Right.
I even believe that they're connecting their drainage to town drain system, which was never approved formally. There's a lot of irony in this whole thing here. As the planning board, though, unless somebody says differently, the bylaws in effect have to stay in effect and can't be altered. On your other side, the bylaw does say if there is existing screening, that that can be worked around and can be complemented to the board's satisfaction. But it also goes to this extent that down the road, if that existing screening was ever taken down, you would then have to come back and comply with the original green belt landscaping criteria. So I don't, and Rich can give these comments on this right now, I think that if you need that land, your best bet is try to work with the the church and see if you can either rezone it or.
Rich may have some comments along that line, John. Rich, you want to contribute here?
Sure. In so in terms of the church as it relates to the fire station property, the fire station property is within the B one outer, so so to apply that, aside from the fact that it's a religious use, but let's just say it wasn't. They would have the benefit of not having a residential district adjacent to them on the, excuse me, on a church property. But in reverse, in terms of the town to the church property, it's residential district. One could foresee a rezoning of the district boundary, just a portion of the property for the church. It doesn't have to be the whole church necessarily. You could do something that you know, addresses kind of give you some flexibility in terms of that border along that property line to do that. Although I also think that the church being a religious use, while I understand the house on the church property, it's still collectively the church, all, everything that is over on that property operates under the church. So not really sure that, you know, impacts the church if it was rezoned to a business district, because again, church has the protection, under forty-eight can go anywhere, and the house is there, so I'm not really sure, in fact, it really harms the church as relation to the house. Now, if the church wanted to rent the house out for non-religious purposes, so rent it to me or you, and then they started collecting rent, and then maybe that changes things in terms of the use of that church. I mean, excuse me, the residences, but if it's associated with a church, there's office in it or, you know, meeting space or whatever, I don't. I mean, obviously, we have to, you know, I would defer to counsel to hopefully confirm what I'm telling you tonight, but there are options. Basically, there are options to address that, if there's a willing interest in all parties.
Okay, so we can, I mean, that's good advice. So we can, we can sort of approach this, I guess, from two ways. One is, you know, what can we do if we wanted to seek like a variance from the zoning board for twenty feet, right, and keep the thirty-foot green belt in place to meet your your thoughts about the fact that it could be, you know, they could rent this out for residential use at some point, right?
Let me just pause there, just clarify. So the comment is, so the twenty-foot buffer on the town, on the, that is a special permit through the ZBA?
Okay.
Not a variance, so I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
I'm only talking about the residential house that's on the church property. Want to talk about the residential house?
Right, right.
I don't want to, I don't want to merge those two things. They're separate, but.
Is the house right now the school that they refer to as the school?
No, I believe it's actually the house that's on.
Okay, so it's the, it's the house next door. It's the separate house next door to the school. Okay, all right. Okay, so we can discuss that at the working group meeting tomorrow and just kind of provide them the feedback you just provided. The next question we have has to do with parking. The way we've reviewed the ordinance, given that this is a fire station, is under section F dot seven dot B dot six, there's a requirement for all other non-recreational public facilities. And it requires one parking space for every three hundred square feet of usable floor space. And so when we do that calculation, using the floor space as defined, it says, you know, not including lobbies or walkway spaces or open areas or anything like that. We come down to a certain amount of square footage, which is roughly six thousand square feet. That gets us to twenty spaces. It could be a little bit more, and we have two questions. One is the apparatus space are basically a parking garage, right? So we don't, right now, we're not including that as usable space, because the ordinance does say something about usable space is not, does not include parking areas, underground parking areas. This isn't underground, obviously. It's above ground. So would that base space need to be used, placed in the calculation for usable floor space?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Ask a question relative to parking spaces. When you approach the fire department and ask them, what is the size of the crew they're going to have in the building? Are they going to have twenty people? Are they going to have thirty people? Are they going to have ten people? What are they going to have?
The fire chief is looking for twenty-five to thirty spaces. So we don't want to overbuild, and we don't want to underbuild. So I was just, I guess, asking the question about, like, how do we come up with the formula that says, here's how many spaces we need, and then we'll know whether or not we have to come back for a special permit to say we're going to decrease the parking areas or we're going to increase the parking areas? Is that? Because right now, we've had discussions with everyone, and, you know, we're looking at roughly thirty spaces, twenty-five to thirty spaces. Again, we have to communicate with the church, because the thinking is if we ever had, for instance, the ribbon cutting, right? Lots of people in town will show up for the ribbon cutting. Where are they going to park? We're thinking that overflow parking could easily be in the church's parking lot, which is fifty feet away from the building. So.
Here's what I would suggest.
Yep.
I would do, what I would follow the, really the process we've done before is I would, you know, sit down or virtually sit down with Bob yourself and go through what we've done with other applicants. Take the parking table. If you can't find it in there, you have to go through what's in here, the, I'll call it the catch-all parking component, understanding, you know, the section F seven doesn't have every use contemplated in terms of parking. Come up with that number to comply in terms of the zoning bylaw, and then look at, you know, your actual need versus probably, you know, what, what's a realistic parking load for municipal fire stations? You know, IT has parking low, et cetera. And then the planning board could then take all that information through the special permit process to get, get a number to you. So you could, you know, come up with the computation, say this is what the bylaw requires, and then meet, you know, informally with the planning board, say, this is what we're thinking we need, actual need versus bylaw required, and then the planning board has, they have that authority.
Usually, usually the discussion is, we don't want to build as many parking spaces as the bylaw requires. It sounds like from what you've done in preliminary calculation, that the reverse is the case. We want to build more than the requirement of the bylaw. And my guess is that would be very favorably reviewed by the board.
To your point, Rich, we, this is where we were coming up with the question, because if we use four-point-seven-point-B-point-six, you know, we're classifying the entire building as a non-recreational public facility. If we then go into that chart you're speaking of, and we break it down to, okay, is it residential, because we have some overnight bunk rooms? Is it business occupancy, because obviously? Is it business occupancy? Because obviously the fire station has some business offices. Is it a public assembly space? Because we've got the training room. And to your point, Walter, if we added up all those cars, we're going to be like, we're building Walmart's parking lot, right? And so, so we wanted to just, I think, you know, get the idea of really this is a fire station, you know, it's not a public assembly building. Um, it's not a residential building. And so we were kind of looking at it as it is that catchall, Rich, that you're talking about, which is that non-recreational, uh, public facility.
Yeah, even at that run, so in terms of, you know, that's, there's probably been at least since I've been here, three different projects where, you know, when you apply the real, in terms of the, the bylaw requirement is not unique to Norfolk either. I mean, um, in terms of what the actual need is, um, they usually don't match up. But in the case of Norfolk, there is the ability of the planning board to grant uh, reduction through the special permit process. And they have done at least, at least two occasions since I've been here, maybe three, if I go back. Because they are, they're recognized that, again, you don't, you know, everything doesn't fit, you know, square playground hall and you, you have to use some, you know, some published numbers and some common sense, so to speak. And, and then, you know, to get to that number.
Okay. And then the other, another question about parking that the civil engineer was working with us, um, was if you just take a look at the diagram right there, you see the blue shape is the concept design for the building. Um, the gray is the apron out in front for the trucks. And then, you know, if we get this area or not. Um, but then using essentially the same curb cut or the, almost the same proximity as the curb cut now, um, coming into this is, you know, the ordinance says that there's no parking in the front yard setback. So that's that green line right there is the front yard setback. So obviously we're staying out of there. We just wanted to confirm that you would consider this piece here, the side yard. You know, allowable is side yard parking. Uh, because rear parking and side yard parking is basically all we're going to be able to have. Um, trying to stay out of that front yard setback.
I know that Ron, you have a member, a former member of the planning board on your committee.
Correct.
Well, well versed in this topic, um, as well as the planning board. And I would probably say he would probably tell you, you might need a special permit through the planning board to put the parking in the front. There is another vehicle for that as well, or, or, uh, by law process.
So I guess, Rich, you're, you're considering where that parking is located right there. That, that would be the, considered the front, not the side?
I don't, I don't get to.
It's normally the, the front elevation of the building to the street.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Okay. Um, so given our schedule, May eighth, uh, I, excuse me, March eighth and May sixteenth and June fourteenth, when do you recommend we start the special permit process? Because you'd want the special permits in place before we submit on June fourteenth. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. No, no, they usually run in parallel.
Simultaneously.
Okay. So we would submit and identify these as special permit requests. Okay, okay. So the next question we had is you see this little red arrow here? Um, this is, we've got three garage doors on the back of the apparatus base so that we could drive out in one direction. Um, and this would not be sort of a two-way road, if you will. Um, it would basically be sort of a one-way, uh, the, the equipment coming out of the back of these would most likely be the chief's, um, you know, administrative vehicle or an ambulance or a squad vehicle. So small vehicles. Um, if we make this a one-way, can we reduce the width of that from the twenty-four feet? And you can see there's no parking along this at all. And we were looking through the ordinance to try to find out where it talks about, you know, the aisle width in a parking lot, it talks about the aisle width. Um, but it didn't seem to say anything about sort of an access drive. And the civil engineer is thinking that that could be, um, like twenty-four feet or eighteen feet wide and accommodate um, just the fire vehicles. It would be restricted to fire vehicles only as they're coming out of the building. And so we just wanted to get your opinion on that before we start engineering it.
How wide did you want it to be?
Um, eighteen to twenty feet.
I have no issue with that.
Let me ask you a related question, however, um, I, I recognize the, the rear, rear of the property. You've got a hill to deal with there.
Yes.
You have not made the, uh, the, the traffic flow around the back of the building a complete loop. And I wondered why you wouldn't tackle that issue now and make the, the driveway accessible all the way around.
Well, so the one reason is, you know, we've got to tackle this property line setback along the, the church property line. Um, the other one is that from a code.
Assuming that you get that kind of, uh, variance, uh, why wouldn't you take it all the way around?
Um, well, we can certainly give it a try. Um, I think what we're trying to do is also not push the building far enough back. So it doesn't, you know, so we can leave the existing fire station operational while this is constructed.
Sure.
And then if we did want to do what you're suggesting, it would just be in a little bit more ledge removal back here. Or I should say a lot of ledge removal back here and sort of a retaining wall to get that to take place. I think from a code perspective, and you know, we have some code gurus in the office who are, who are looking into this, um, we're kind of thinking that the building is only, it's, I think it's under sixteen thousand or under seventeen thousand square feet in terms of a footprint. And with that, you know, we won't need the, um, the hundred percent perimeter access around the building. So I guess, number one, it's a question, I guess, for the fire chief, but, um, for you as a planning board, is that something you'd like to see? Or is that something you might require?
It's, it's purely a like to see thing from my point of view, but
Okay.
If, if I were on your, your committee, that's what I'd be pushing for.
Okay. Um, no, it's good to know. We'll, we'll definitely take that into, uh, consideration. Um, and then the last question that we had, um, really stems from the last conversation we had about flat roofs. Um, as you said, Rich, we do have a member of the design review board on our committee and we were having a conversation and I think, um, John, you may have been on the call um, at last week's building committee meeting where we were talking about achieving that uh, requirement, that bylaw of getting some pitched roofs, obviously, visible from Main Street. And two questions came up when we were having that discussion. One is if you travel up Main Street towards the church and then you go around the corner of the church, in the summertime, you can't see the building, can't see the fire station site because all the trees are in, you know, they have leaves on the trees. And then in the wintertime, you can see this west side of the building. So the first question is this pitched roof bylaw, does it really pertain to Main Street? Like when you're driving up and down Main Street and you're looking at the building, um, do you want to see a pitched surface? Um, or is it from every street, meaning the street on the other side of the church, looking across their property in the winter?
Go by the bylaw.
Okay.
Doesn't specify the type of street.
It doesn't.
Why, why are you shying away from a pitch roof so much?
Just cost.
Rubber, a rubber roof is just nothing but problems down the road. And I understand that they're pretty expensive. So i- if you had a, a, a pitched roof, what do you build it with trusses? Is that what you do? Even though it's metal studs?
Um, yeah, we'd have to figure out whether they're metal, uh, stud trusses. So light gauge framing with trusses or if they're.
You're saying that cost is much more than, than a, a rubber roof?
Oh, yeah.
Seriously, huh?
Yeah.
There's half of the problem over at the fire station with the rubber roof. Every time somebody goes up there to do something, there's another perforation in the rubber. And it leads to problem. It just happens, you know?
Sure.
With the pitch truth, there's, there's just a straight runoff and you don't have that issue.
Sure. No, it's, um, you know, they make the EPDM roofs, um, and the TPO roofs they have today are a little bit more reinforced and a little bit more robust, if you will, than the older first generation membranes. Um, but it, it's just cost. It's not only cost, but it's aesthetics, you know? So we were, you know, we're planning to go in front of the design review board and the question came up. Cause you're right, the bylaw says streets. It doesn't say a road. It says streets. So, you know, the question came up. Well, you can see it in the winter. Um, not in the summer. And then the next question that came up was if for whatever reason, we come up with this really nice design that has a couple of flat roof areas in the front of the building, predominantly pitched roof, but just a couple of flat roof areas, like a canopy or something like that. Um, or some kind of connector. You, you know, if the design review board sort of approves and gives you their recommendation, is that something that you act on or is it still?
They, they can, the design review board can do whatever they want. They can recommend to us whatever they want.
Okay.
But the bylaws, the bylaw, you, you keep trying to pass that and, and say you already got to work with some of it. I mean, this was voted in by the town and this is what they want. So the bylaw stands his hold and you can't look for a waiver for part of it. And that's what, you know, you spent a lot of your meeting trying to get around that, but it, it's pretty, I wasn't part of writing it. I think Aaron might have been, but, uh, it is what it is.
Okay. Nope. I get it.
He's got his hand raised. We are here what he has to, to offer. Can, can you let him in, um?
Sure. Yeah, he can just.
Trying to, uh, bide my time and be polite here. Hello, everyone. Aaron on two sixty-six Main Street, member of the Fire Station Building Committee. Uh, my name's been mentioned a few times here. Well, not name, but persona, I guess. I, I guess I have a few things to say, just sort of in general to the conversation. And I'll start with the, the general conversation is zoning bylaws and town guidelines aren't written for one-off buildings like a fire station. I think the gist of the questions that we are asking here as, as the, as the board and the architect is, is doing for the board or for the committee, sorry, is you know, we're, in all likelihood, we're coming before the town for a special permit review. And there'll be some interpretations of the bylaws and different stipulations through the town. The real question is, is, you know, working together with all the different committees and boards and groups in town, can we get to a fire station that meets the intent of all of these guidelines? And becomes a successful building for the town, both aesthetically and financially and functionally. Right? So it, it, I don't think it's so much trying to cut corners or trying to find ways around things or weasel out of, you know, bylaws. I think it's a conversation about, you know, can we work together to get to a good place? And I, I think that's just a general sort of feeling of, of where we're coming from here. Uh, there's some difficulties, uh, as we all know, uh, with development in our, in our business district. Uh, and this is a particularly unique site, which is we've spent many, many hours talking about the fact that, you know, some of these residential neighbors, they, they kind of stick their, um, you know, they, they have these ways of getting into the center of the business district and creating these exact conversations that we're having here as a group. Uh, and not only that, in this case, the residential property that we're talking about isn't a residence, it's a church. So, you know, it's, there's all kinds of gray, all kinds of gray associated with this development. And, uh, you know, we're, we're here as a group, just trying to talk through all of these things to see, you know, are, are we going in the wrong direction or do, is the direction we're going in seem reasonable? Uh, we can work through the details of, you know, of how it actually applies to the bylaws and all those things as we go, but, um, I, I think that's the general gist of, of at least what I've, what I've been mentioning at these committee meetings and, and how we're going about developing these things. And that, you know, and I don't, I don't think we'd be bringing them to, to the, to the planning board here. You know, if we didn't think there was some value behind them. So if we need to further explain the value behind them, then, you know, those are certainly questions we can ask of the architect. Uh, that, I guess the second question and John, I'm not quite sure I understand your explanation of the bylaws and which ones aren't modifiable by a special permit process and which ones are.
Well, there's a bylaw and the regulations. As I said, the regulation is something the planning board gets together. We post up and add the paper thirty days before we meet and we vote. A bylaw is something that goes through town meeting that has a two-thirds requirement by the people of the town to pass. That's a law that we do not have the right to waive or change. And that's been, uh, one of the points along. We can always go, you know, on the, on the thing about hot of the roof that you don't see in the winter and all that. We can always go to town council to get a ruling on that because that's what we normally do because we're not.
Yeah, I, 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 I am not sure I understand where you're coming from that one, John. I might ask Rich to, to give us a, an explanation of that. I mean, maybe, maybe others on the call understand it better than I do, but I mean, I, the whole purpose to the special permit process is to allow variances to the bylaws, right?
A special permit is allowed to variance of the bylaw when it's specified in the bylaw that this part can be amended by a special permit.
I think, if I might.
Again, I, it just.
I think the only thing that, correct me, John, I'll restate it, that John's saying is that there is a latitude, actually is the, the roof piece of this because in the,
Exactly.
In section I four A six, it says in the event of flat roof, a desire of the building should have the look of a pitch roof from the front sides and rear, depending upon where may be visible from the street. The other ones definitely have the, you talked about the parking for sure.
Exactly.
The, uh, the buffer, um, as well, both of those do. You have the, the special permit process, but then the, um, you know, the waiver to the planning board on the, on the dimension to how the, the minimum could be is thirty feet. You can't go less than thirty.
For example, our height, the old bylaw in towns on the B one district was the height of a building could be forty, had to be under forty feet. Except with a special permit, you could go to forty-six. So right there on the bylaw, they're giving you a chance to waive on some of it by a special permit. This roof one has no such exception. The parking does, the green bell does to an extent, but the roof one doesn't.
So I guess, Rich and, and John, if I could put it another way, um, many cities and towns, they have their zoning bylaws. And the only way to get relief from a bylaw is to present a hardship, right? And then the zoning board of appeals.
I do not believe you can get a relief from by a, by a, uh,
Okay.
Not from a bylaw.
Well, you could, I mean, just theoretically, you can, I'm not sure. So this is.
The bylaw, the bylaw doesn't say no flat roofs.
No, I know. All right. It doesn't say no flat roofs. In the case of a flat roof, you have to, I don't know, I'm reading what, the building should have the look of a pitched roof, right? So.
And it gives a pitch of five pitch to ten pitch.
Five, fair, five twelve, yeah.
Five twelve.
Yep.
You know, I'll tell you something. I was on the fire, uh, building committee six or seven years ago. And I went through this. I have great sympathy for you folks. Talk about wanting to work with you. I understand everything involved. And we went and we did design a building for both and it did have a pitched roof. I think the plans were somewhere in town hall. And we lost by seven votes at the time. So there's great sympathy for what you're trying to do. I'm just simply saying that, uh, a lot of folks come and think we have the legality to take a town meeting vote and alter it and we don't. That's all.
One, one question isn't clear to me from what I could see here in the drawing. Is this a one-story or a two-story building?
Uh, two-story, two-story. Uh, for the most part, it's two-story. There's a couple of little areas that are one-story.
Right, okay.
Yep. Um, okay. Well, this was, this was good and we'll, we'll follow up with Rich and obviously we have our working group meeting. Tomorrow. Yep.
If I, if I could just jump in, Don Walter with Don, what are your, the, the, I just want to point out that the two stories are two stories over the top of the apparatus base. So the floor to floor height is taller than you would typically see, you know, anything thirteen floor, fourteen feet floor to floor. We're talking about over twenty-one feet floor to floor. So part of the discussion is not just about, you know, can we mix in flat roofs with pitch roofs? Just because, it's because we're trying to keep the scale of the building down too. So, uh, just wanted to point that out as we go forward.
So, uh, the, the height of the of the flat roof at the moment is what from elevate from the, from the ground?
Oh, everything is, everything is right at or below forty feet.
Right.
It's just that, you know, when you look at the existing building, I think the existing building is just under thirty feet, if I'm correct. Um, you know, that's the peak, right? So that the way the bylaw is written, it's to the peak of the roof, not like some intermediate piece, but in the B one district, they call it the peak, um, from the average grade. So you're looking at a building that's going to be ten feet, thirteen feet taller than your existing uh, fire station. And I'm the peak of the roof, you know? So, you know, that's why I, that's why I was thinking if the
When you say the peak of the, you're talking about peak of a flat roof or the peak of the pitch roof?
Peak, peak of a pitched roof. We have a pitched roof on there now. Yeah, yeah. Um, so this is a three, the three parts, right? So where yes, we're designing a pitched roof and we have been. Um, we're starting to get some, some cost evaluations coming in. Um, and we're taking a look at that. And then there's the design aspect and, you know, we do plan to go in front of the design review committee or the design review board. And, you know, we do know that they're making a recommendation to the planning board. So we just, you know, essentially wanted to clarify what latitude the design review board have to talk about design and to recommend design. And I think like Aaron said, you know, I'm sure when the ordinances were written, it wasn't written around a, a fire station, right? It's written around commercial buildings and business use in the business zone and things like that. And so um, we're just again, trying to work with everyone, make sure we get this thing, you know, in a financial place that it passes, right? In a functional place that it passes and that from a site perspective, it's going to be here for the next hundred years. So we want to make sure it's done right.
The idea run is when this pitched roof bylaw came in, that was after we had tried to get the fire station approved and denied because the town realized that we need one desperately. And after that fact is when the pitch roof bylaw came in. With absolutely no leadway for anything.
Okay.
Let me ask another complicating question. I know you don't need more or complicated complications, but um, I know you're aware of this, but it isn't evident, I don't think, from the drawing I'm looking at. And that question is, what about the future wastewater treatment system that potentially was going to go at the back of this lot over there in that corner? Um, i- is that still possible?
We've met with that group. Um, and what we've discussed with that group is right now it's shown in this area. But they also said, you know, it might even go up here, right? Or it might go somewhere down here, or, you know, they were looking at different aspects of it because we kind of are, you can see that we're not doing anything here. This is that little green thing. I don't know if you can see that. Maybe I can zoom in here.
Yeah.
Um, this is their existing trailer right now.
Yep.
And this is that Comcast building that we need to talk with Comcast about because they got some work to do in town anyway. Um, so essentially what we're thinking is maybe whatever they have in here ends up going in our building, you know, in any kind of sort of switch or connection for the town and then we can get rid of that little box. And that sort of frees up this whole area here. Um, in order to get that sewer um, thing in. And and my understanding from the sewer thing, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, when we were in that meeting, uh, they said everything is underground. Right? So everything would be underground in these setbacks, except one, um, pump station building, which is a prefabricated thing that that might go here next to the dumpsters or something, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so it, we're cognizant of it. But again, at the same time, the group working on that and Rich, um, I think you're also on that call. You know, the direction to us was, look, don't kill yourself and create a fire station that doesn't work because we got to get this pump station in, you know? Let's, let's just be cognizant of where it's going. And when the fire station's done and it's complete for five years and the sewer project actually goes forward, we're not ripping up our parking lots after just five years of use. So. Yep.
Was the, uh, just a quick question related to that. So there's a, the, the shape of the lot is somewhat pie-shaped and the building could be floated forward. Um, however, it looks like the further back the building is, the more you can get parking spaces in. So I, it seems like, put all the components of the building together, the building's going to be exactly that. And then you can float it around on the lot and and you're doing that to try and get as many parking spaces as you can. Is that why it ended up on the backside of the lot?
Yeah. And Gary, you see this black line right here?
Yeah.
That's the existing fire station.
Yeah.
So we, the intent here is to keep that operational while this is constructed.
Yeah.
Um, so to your comment about floating, that's exactly what we're doing, right? Right now, we're floating between this red setback line, the existing building and this foot of ledge. You know, because that's where the previous blasting sort of ended, if you will. Um, and so what we've done is we're trying to, that's why it's a two-story building. We've literally taken the entire program and gone up two stories. Um, the reason we can't go up three stories is we're going to be well above the forty-six feet. So, um, that's, yeah, to answer your question, yeah, that's where we're at. We're trying to massage this thing and you know, this is the concept footprint. We're going to try to massage it a little bit more as we go forward, just to make things a little easier, if you will. Um, to, to give you an example, we may want to get a little farther away from the existing station to get scaffolding and such in there. Um, because right now I think it's like ten feet or less. And so that's, that's why we think that this meetings are so good and we really appreciate you having in the in the ordinance that we can have these preliminary meetings for informational purposes, because everything you've told us tonight is going to help greatly when we meet tomorrow with the working group.
And, and if the existing building wasn't there, then the new building wouldn't be where it's currently located or it would still be the ideal site?
Well, we could push it a little bit closer. So this is the road here. And between the curb line and the fire station wall, I guess you'd call it. Uh, we're trying to get the trucks to be able to come in and turn around on-site and then back in. Um, right now, the chief, you know, told us that the department has to turn these trucks around in the street. And they would very much like to get them off the street. So to answer that, if if we were, if there were funds available, because obviously, you know, knocking this down beforehand, you know, uh, costs more money than leaving it in place until the thing's built. We would also take a look at that, like that distance between the fire station and the actual road. We take that into account that he wants to be able to turn the trucks around, back them in.
Yeah. Well, you could build half of the proposed building closer to the street. Emolish the existing building and add the other half. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's still the ideal site. Uh, you would, you would have chosen that site and and you explain, you're explaining the reasons why, which are, um, it it's beneficial to turn the trucks around.
And not only that, but the chief did, um, I don't know if it was, if he did it this year or in preparation for this project and and, you know, John, I don't know if you did it as part of your prior project, but all indications are that this site for the fire station is the best in terms of response time to every place in town. You know, and so that was another reason, um, that I think the town decided, let's, let's see if this site works first. And if it does, this is where we want to locate it because it has to do it response times. And then if it doesn't work, we'll go somewhere else. But right now we think it works.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I mean, somewhat along that line with the, the bib there, um, the idea of utilizing that side driveway, that's kind of a, a budding the church property to allow the vehicles to come in there and go through a, through bay as opposed to having to enter and exit through the front. Kind of gives you back that space, doesn't it?
Um, it, it could. Yeah, if we you, you know, if we came around this way, there is some program space back here that's required. Um, but we do, we, right now, we have three of the six bays drive straight through. Um, and it's not just to drive straight through in terms of the trucks returning from a call. But it's to be able to have all of your main apparatus ready to go without having to move a truck out of the way, which is what they have to do right now. Um, but not only have the main apparatus for a fire, but also have your rescue vehicles be able to immediately exit um, the fire station.
So they're almost double stacked essentially.
Exactly. They're double stacked. Yep.
Understood.
Chair, if I may jump in. Uh, Aaron on speaking again. Uh, Chris, to your question, we were, we had that conversation in in building committee meetings and and I think the the answer that I settled on was the same one that we just talked about is, is that it's not truly a drive-through because in order to make the best use of the space, they're double stacking or triple stacking vehicles in the space. So it's not a true, it's not a true drive-through, um, scenario. Uh, and I, I found interestingly that the, um, unless it is a true drive-through scenario, it's not, it's not even a functional benefit for the, for the firefighters. It's a and if you, if it was a true drive-through, then it would be a much longer, bigger square footage building, right? Because you'd have to stretch out your bay uh, in order for them all to be single loaded. And Gary, to, to your question, um, you know, uh, again, we pushed, uh, we've had many conversations about what the most efficient way to execute this project is. I'm sure we're not done with those, but um, uh, one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight, and I don't know how closely everybody's following the project, but we, we are looking at upgrading the existing uh, residential, uh, units for the, for the firefighters during construction because the condition, the trailer that they're in now just is is past its useful life. Um, you know, so we're talking about a half a million dollars just for that. And that's just the residences, right? And that's a temporary fix. So now if you start talking about phasing and using pieces of building and uh, extending construction schedule to accommodate, you know, the phases, it just the pot, this, the costs seem to pile up. So, um, the, the most efficient, straightforward answer is to build a new, operate in the existing building, build the new building and then demo the existing building. And we've kind of been, we've been sticking to that because it's anytime we look at something else, it, the cost just start to skyrocket.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I believe that's all we had for tonight. Told you to be quick.
All right, I'm, I'm glad we had this opportunity to talk with you and hopefully you found it fruitful.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you. We will see you again on the eighth of March, right?
Yes, yep.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Bye.
All right, returning to our agenda, uh, the next item we have is Seven Shire Drive request for minor mark minus site plan modification to replace wooden fence with chain link fence with privacy slats. Rich, you want to take us through this, please?
Sure, um, Mike DeLuca is on the line, but he's a oh, if you have questions in terms of what's, uh, being requested, they're, uh, getting close to the point where they're ready to seek occupancy permit for the their building that they're, they're constructing on Seven Shire Drive. When we actually go back and look at the decision for the special permit, it references a chain link fence with privacy slats, but the site plan that was accompanied with the project had shown, uh, wooden fence. And, uh, Mike is, uh, requested to be able to to utilize the chain link fence with privacy slats, which is also, um, there are other operations on, up on Shire Drive and Sharon Ave that use a similar fencing screening. So I was really looking to, uh, comply with the special permit and have the, the site plan match what was voted on by the special permit for the outdoor storage.
So there was, there was a discrepancy between the, this, what was in the decision and what was on the site plan drawing, huh?
Correct, between the two. And then, uh, the second item is that he's getting close to, um, looking for occupancy permit. It would be a temporary one because we're, as you know, we're in in the, in the middle of, well, yeah, essentially the middle of January. Um, so he does need to put the top coat on and, and finish up some of the landscaping. Um, but what, what, uh, in discussions with, uh, Beta Group, but also the billing department, what they, what Mike is preparing is, is an ASBIL plan um, for what has been constructed to that point. Um, Beta will go through, provide a punch list, what left to be outstanding, oh, excuse me, what's left to be completed as far as outstanding items. And then, um, post some surety to make sure everything is done. Um, and so I'm asking for a, at least a, a vote of the board to allow them to proceed to the next phase, which is a temporary occupancy permit. And I think there's a decent chance that would happen prior to your next meeting, which is February eighth. Um, and we discussed, uh, you know, a timeframe, uh, as we typically do with argument temporary, we want to put a timeframe so that way it's it's not open-ended as far as completing and wrapping up the project. I think, um, you know, considering the weather and maybe the middle of May, somewhere around there, um, not much later than that. I don't see a reason to go beyond that. It could be May first if you wanted, but just to give a little bit of buffer. Maybe actually, you know, I just, I'm, I'm thinking about in my head, maybe it's till the day, uh, after your meeting in May. So maybe it's May seventeenth, so.
Yeah, that could be, um, uh, could you put up a, a drawing of the site plan just to show us where those, that fence is going to be built?
Sure. Yep. Hold on, let me, uh, I'll go ahead and pull that up. So hopefully you can, uh, see that on the screen where the red arrows
Yep.
Back of the site.
So from that point where you have your cursor all the way around the back.
Yeah, so it comes, comes down, then turns to the building here, you see.
And then goes up to the corner.
Yep, comes down.
Where does it come back down to the left? Where does it end on? Is it up and, up and, up above your cursor? Where, where is it in?
So the fence comes down. No, Mike's point, Mike, are you, uh? Let me see, let me zoom in here a minute. Second.
It looks like it might, uh, come right to that upper left corner and stop because there's existing fence, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so there's that little jog that looks like an L. That's where it looks like it ends.
Yeah, over here.
No, 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 six foot, six foot high solid vinyl fence.
Oh, right here. Yeah, sorry, right here.
So there's that L jog.
Yeah.
Now, now the little bit and then turns to the right. Yeah, I got it. Okay, understood. Thank you for that. All right, so we need a motion to, well, let's, let's see, any further questions by board members? Any, uh, questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Hearing none, then we need a, a motion to accept the change to the site plan drawing to indicate a six-foot, uh, chain link fence with privacy slats. Per drawing such and such, whatever the, the, the number of that drawing was.
I can, uh,
So Chair will entertain a motion to, uh, to that effect to make a minor modification to the, uh, site plan to allow the addition of a six-foot high uh, chain link fence with privacy slats. As indicated.
Submolved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Monford.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Uh, Gary, what, what's your view?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so you have that minor modification. Now, um, Rich, you want to frame the, the, uh, the motion to, uh, allow temporary occupancy?
Yes, um, the motion would be, like to see would be a motion to allow the building commissioner to issue a temporary occupancy permit for Seven Shire Drive. building commissioner to issue a temporary occupancy permit for Seven Shire Drive.
To allow or to recommend?
To allow.
Do, do we have the authorization to allow him or not to allow him?
No.
You have uh, let me just hold, bear with me for one second. How's that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So uh and uh, I'm gonna find the section of it. So uh under F11B Procedure for Approval, it says no, and uh, no certificate occupancy should be issued until all requirements approved. Site plan are completed. A temporary occupancy may be issued by the building commissioner where the site plan work has not been completed. If the planning board determines that a temporary occupancy permit is worn based upon the request of the property owner that the subject of site plan approval.
Okay, understood. Thank you. That was clarifying. Appreciate it. All right, so um is there any discussion in the board about issuing or allowing the building permission, commissioner to issue a temporary occupancy permit to the middle of May? Hearing none, then the Chair will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Searle. Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, Gary, your view?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Rich, anything else on this topic?
No, that's it.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is discuss proposed town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. Rich, you're up.
Okay, sure. So uh let me uh I just want to get to, uh, well, I'm gonna, I'll multitask. I will show you the list and then we can, I'll do, I'll talk and then I'll pull up the list.
Yep.
As I did discuss with the planning board before, it remained on the list, but it would be um deferred in terms of making adjustments to the floodplain bylaw because the, the floodplain map from the FEMA has not, uh, has not been produced, so we'll delay that for uh the spring of 2023. That's the Fort Bullitt down there. But I'll start towards, I'll work my way, well, actually, interesting enough, I'll probably bounce around, sorry for that, but uh the last item, uh, the last on that bullet list was the possibility of um establishing through a special permit process lots that were less than the thirty forty three thousand five sixty and fifty five thousand square feet which was all enacted in nineteen sixty eight to, through a special permit process vary the setbacks. Um, if they wanted to have an addition and so forth with their existing dwellings. So it would have to be, it would be for dwellings in existence of May, no, sorry, not May, March sixteenth, nineteen fifty three. However, um, that's a little bit more a deeper dive, I think. I'll just kind of hold off on that for the spring and we can, I'll work on that and come back to the planning board. It's not a pressing matter, it's just more of a long range planning issue to give consideration to. As it relates to, and I sent it to you, uh, possibility, possibility of revisiting the uh accessory building that we did uh, look at last, you know, basically a year ago, um, which was delayed into conversations with the building department, the only thing that they really would like to see, and it's not pressing per se, um, as it relates to accessory buildings, it just insert the word setback. That was the one word that um isn't in that section of the bylaw as it relates to accessory buildings. Um, but in terms of, I did send you the possibility, the special permit to, you know, reduce those setbacks and so forth, but um, the thought was we'll stay away from it. I don't think it's really quite necessary. If somebody needs relief, they can go for variance, but uh so.
Okay, so on that one, you're going to come back with, with the existing language with one word inserted in it next meeting?
Yeah, that's it. One word.
Okay.
And then you can decide whether or not uh it makes sense or not.
Yep.
Um, to do that. Then in terms of Airbnb, that's a little bit um, as I think I mentioned to you before, in terms of, you know, there isn't any prohibition in terms of our bylaw. If somebody wanted to rent their house out, we don't define, you know, so short term rental. Um, so I've done a little bit of research on it and it varies in terms of some towns have set up a licensing process um through their select boards for Airbnb, similar to if you went for licensing for a bed and breakfast. Um, there is uh a distinction under uh the state in terms of an Airbnb versus a uh bed and breakfast, for example, in terms of um those two different uses. It's not a significantly big issue necessarily in Norfolk, but um it can be a little bit challenging. So it's either to regulate it in a way that makes sense, which could also be through a license process opposed to the zoning. Or um through the zoning bylaw, it's just that um from the zoning bylaw, it can be a little bit cumbersome just from an enforcement standpoint. Um, because you really have to, it's hard to police in terms of, to see if somebody's violating or not.
So Rich, sorry to interrupt, but we've talked about this one a couple of times and um we keep coming back to, let's see what other towns are doing from a bylaw perspective. Do you have examples?
Um, I've asked council to, to get me some examples. I'm wait, I didn't get it for tonight. I'll share it with you for the in between, now and next meeting. I don't have a, so far I'm not coming up with great examples of what other towns are doing. Um, other towns, the ones that I have seen, uh, Chris, is that they just, it's prohibited, so they're not actually regulating it. So they're not allowing it, but I'm still digging for it. I haven't had a good example yet to share with you, so.
And so those towns that aren't allowing it, how are they enforcing that? Or are they just not?
It's really on a one-off basis in terms of complaints, you know, in terms of somebody, if um well, excuse me, let me back up. If it's prohibited. So right now, this the V, the way it is right now under our bylaw is that it's not, you can't, it's not, it's not a violation of our zoning bylaw, essentially, if you rent your house out to somebody. People rent their houses now. I mean, typically they're for a longer duration, um, but it's not prohibited. So we don't have anything on the books to um in terms of some of the towns that I've saw, for example, I heard from Westford where they have it in one particular area, um, which they do allow it short term rentals, but in the other areas of towns they don't, it's, it can be cumbersome to try to enforce it from the zoning perspective. So it's your, you know, your policing in terms of not actual police, but um, you know, websites um to see if people are renting them and then following up to see. So um it's, it's kind of a, a mixed bag, if you will.
Thank you.
Yeah. In terms of the other item, which I want to, I'm going to share put on the screen. Hopefully Kyle's still with me. She didn't, uh, are you still here, Kyle?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. So two, um, two things, uh, so Kyle Privish is here, who is the property manager for Leland Wild, which Leland Wild purchased the Norfolk Airport back in twenty fourteen. Um, um, and so she's here, but I'll just, I'll get to her in a moment. So one of the things, I'll scroll down. So I discussed, so in terms of what I'm looking at, one is the provision within the parking bylaw. If you see their F seven Q is when there are, at least right now, municipal parking areas that serve outdoor recreational and conservation parklands. Um, the town that is, or municipal, um, in this case, it's town Norfolk could come before the planning board to not have to pay parking for what I'll call, you know, open space, outdoor recreational type uses. And we have a few of those locations and Pond Street Recreation Complex on on Pond Street. Um, as you know, if you go down there, there's, there is paid parking, but that's for the handicap parking, but the rest of it's gravel. Um, so there, that's an existing example. But the reason why this came up is that, so I'll get to Leland Wild, but first is uh Mass Audubon. If you recall, uh Bristol Pond Estates, which is off of Marshall Street, abuts Mass Audubon property, which makes it's all the way over to North Street to where Ma- Mass Audubon has their, their building and the center is located. They had approached us, being the town, to provide some parking for folks over by Bristol Pond Estates on Marshall Street. And so the discussion was that it makes a lot of sense to, to put in gravel. It's, it's, you know, less impervious area. It's in keeping with outdoor recreation as opposed to creating parking lots in, you know, more rural, open space settings, not in a business district. However, um, they couldn't put in the parking because of this provision within the bylaw. So the discussion was potentially to open it up for them as well, that they could come before the planning board to be able to put in gravel parking for the trail. They're, they are actually, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I have to find out, but they were, they were developing a trail from North Street all the way out to Marshall Street. They hired trailmakers, which they go in and go canvas uh existing conditions and say, hey, this is what we need you to make this trail available for people. Make it more open for the public instead of, you know, maybe stomping through over uh stumps and so forth and um, and routes that you might find as you're traversing through the woods. Um, so the thought being that if we deleted, simple deletion of municipal, it would allow that for them to apply um to the planning board to put parking in there. For both, you know, their visitors, but also the Norfolk residents who visit that property as well. And then where Kyle comes into play with Leland Wild, they actually invite the public to walk and enjoy the open space. And similarly, they have parking off of, I believe it's Miller Street, which they would like to be able to provide some off-street parking that is safe, accessible for people to be able to use in terms of not parking off of Miller Street. But again, they don't want to be able to have to pay, put in paid parking because it's not really in keeping with that type of use. Um, so the thought being is that if, if we modified this provision, that would be a tool that would be available to them, which isn't right now because we don't, it's not open to them, the way the parking section of the bylaw is written. That's the kind of the simpler aspect of this proposed change. And then the other one, which is a larger discussion, and really what I'm, I'm hoping after I get done speaking, the planning board gives me the, or consents to me to work with Kyle in terms of fashioning a bylaw amendment that would allow um Leland Wild, which they've applied for a nonprofit status as a foundation, to be able to further develop long and short term goals for environmental programming, open space, trails and so forth, that Norfolk Airport property. Um, because presently, right now, they don't fit in the box. We don't have a, a defined use for them in, in terms of what they were wanting to do, nor do we actually have a defined use for Mass Audubon, but Mass Audubon has operated for decades. So in terms of their operation, it really isn't um as critical to them per se, not having a defined use. But with the Leland Wild property is a little more of a front burner issue for them to be able to have um, availability to do environmental programming, wellness and so forth. So what I'm asking, again, would be to, they, what I sent to you was a draft that attorneys working with Kyle had put together by way of a citizen petition, as opposed to the town quarter Norfolk working on a zoning bylaw amendment. The reason why in this case I'm asking perhaps for consent, permission to work with them is while it is a private holding, um, there is significant public benefit to keep this property in, in a more natural state to the townspeople. So maybe the board would be open to me to work with them to fashion something that we could put, well collectively put before you as to sponsor for the spring. Because my first approach, the simple approach, I think the billing department would say that I didn't go quite far enough and the proposal that was submitted by Kyle was maybe a little bit too much. So we're trying to aim for the middle. I'll pause there.
I have a question. Um, does Leland Wild obtaining the five oh one C status uh change the way that the current bylaw could um allow for them to uh change parking there?
It would, it depends how you wanted to find, so if we go down to uh potentially could. So right now, they're not a five oh one C three, or not five oh one, is it five oh? I think so. Well, it just might be technically wrong, but um.
We're, sorry, Rich, we're currently in LLC, but we've applied for um nonprofit status by way of a private operating foundation. So IRS is a little backed up. I don't have a timeline on that yet, but it has been submitted.
So we're silent. So to answer your question, Chris was silent in terms of that. So right now, if we delete municipal, it's, it's open, it's open. We could um, say municipal and nonprofit, you know, to narrow it down a little bit. Um, it's just, it's probably somewhat a timing issue for when, so we're looking at May tenth for Leland Wild, you know, if everything was green lights forward, it'll be May tenth. If it were to pass, um, you know, goes EEG, there's a three month review. I don't know, Kyle probably is not able to answer this question, though I did ask her, you know, best estimate when um she'll hear back from the IRS.
Last I, last I heard, they were a, a year out. And so we submitted a, a couple of months ago, the full application and I reached out to the attorney today to get an update, but it was towards the end of the business day. So I expect to hear something back by tomorrow so I can let you know their best guess on that.
Yeah. I don't know if that answers your question, but at least gives you, or maybe it does.
Well, Rich, um, uh, let's see, you've asked for two things here. One is uh on this F seven Q, you're looking for a one word change to the, to the existing bylaw to uh give more flexibility to people such as Kyle and, and her organization as well as uh Stony Brook.
Correct.
Right? Do I have that right? Just that one word change?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. And the second thing is you want uh the board's blessing to work with Kyle to come up with a, a uh new bylaw. Right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. All right, so uh, there's two proposals on the table. Uh, any discussion by board members?
Just one last quick question on that. Uh, current bylaw, it says there needs to be permanent markings um on the gravel. So how do we accomplish that? Because all I know is that we have those little stanchions um at like Pond Street. I don't know of anything at the Mass Audubon site. So how are we abiding by that?
So what we had proposed What we had proposed. At least early conceptually is to put a curb stop, so basically, you know. You know, like typically you see a curb stop.
Yeah, yeah, we have the curb stops over at Pond Street, but I don't believe I've seen them anywhere else.
So this is really, so that, we would do the same technique over on. With Mass Autobahn, we just haven't, well, we haven't done it yet because we don't have permit, they don't have permission to do it.
Well, I guess the question that I'm driving at is if we're going to go in and make this change, does it make sense to look at that part as well and. Be either more specific with our intent there or remove that portion as well?
Well, we could, we could.
It's not like we can paint markings on the gravel, that's going to be.
Yeah, no, that, that's not practically, I mean, is a, it may be. So one option would be actually, well, I could, I could recommend maybe deleting it to give you some more flexibility as opposed to being so specific.
That's the direction I'm going, and especially at Pond Street, with the snow shoveling and the removal, those little curb stops get pretty beat up. Some of them end up where they're not supposed to be, and I, it's probably an unnecessary cost, to be honest as well.
Yep. I mean, I think.
If we're going to go in here and touch this, I think we should probably take care of that area as well.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense, hopefully the other board members agree.
Yeah. Do what's right. Another question, or Rich, you mentioned down at Pond Street, the, the handicap area is paved, whereas the rest of the parking is crushed down. Is there an ADA requirement for. Handicap parking to be paved? Would we face that same request, requirement, excuse me, in this situation?
So I know at least conversations between Kyle and myself that their intention is to provide accessibility in terms of the. The trails that they're developing. It's a little bit of a gray. It's an interpretive question, actually, in terms of. What type of, in terms of what kind of a trail improvements that you make, whether you trigger accessibility. Because. Let me. I think the best way to answer that is, so we are working, was you, no, not to, I'm not sidestepping your question. In terms of the, we're working on a Medicomic freeway project. And I think. I will ask, so Beta's doing that work for us, let me ask them and I'll get an answer back to you.
Okay, I mean, if, we would hate to, to write the bylaw and actually execute it in two or three places in town, then find out, whoops. We've got to go back and put in three. Handicap spaces, whatever, and pave them, you know?
Yeah, so in terms of what we have to do versus, you know, a non-public entity, I think there is a difference. And I also believe, if I recall correctly, there is a way to get a waiver from having to provide handicap parking if it doesn't. You know, if you're talking about trails that really aren't. In terms of. You have, you don't. You don't have the ability because you're not altering the terrain, you're going through the woods, through natural topography, it's not already accessible.
Yeah, okay, we'll dig into it and.
Okay.
No.
Yep, alright.
Alright, so. The board okay with Rich's two proposals, one to work on the amendment of F seven. Q and secondly, to work with Kyle and come up with a new bylaw? I don't think we need, I don't think we need a motion to that effect, I just need a sort of consensus of the board. Chris is okay, Gary?
It's fine with me.
John?
Yep, fine.
Fine with me too, okay.
Excellent, good, thank you. I'll go back to this video if I need to, if somebody says I shouldn't have done it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
All right, good night, Kyle.
Thank you.
Hey, let's see, Town Planner Updates is next on our agenda. Housing Choice Grant, Next Steps, Norfolk Town Center Waste Water Master Plan, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to be brief for you, so we can get done, in terms of I've. I've reached out to Woodward and Kern, they're currently working on. Putting together the scope of work to go to the next phase in terms of. Design, well, actually permitting and design for the wastewater treatment plant for Norfolk Town Center. I should have. Hopefully something in the next. Couple weeks, thereabouts, we discussed it before Christmas, I can tell you. That maybe I didn't say this before, but. We were. Successful in terms of the American Rescue Plant Act money that came through. The state, well, actually, sorry, excuse me, the federal government through. To the state of Massachusetts, we asked and received a hundred thou, we will be receiving a hundred thousand dollars towards this work. From the, what they call the ARPA money. And that was put forth through Senator Rush's office. On behalf of Town Norfolk. So we are, we are going to be recipients of that money, so. So that's a good, I did have. Police are still. Working with property owners on the sewer and I didn't get to return. A phone call for Mr. Pessini, which is, you know, Mr. Pessini's property in Rockwood Road, I forget exactly the numbers, but. I presume he's calling me, he's probably interested to know what's going on with the sewer, so that was a positive. Conversation, obviously Duncan Donuts is still positive, and then the property owner who's across from Duncan Donuts. Literally across from the fire station. Is equally interested in potentially redevelopment, mixed use of some kind on that property, and sewer would be key to them, so. Took us some work ahead, but we're. I should have a scope shortly and I can, I'll share it with everybody once I get it.
Thank you. Update, Southwood Hospital site is next.
Sure, and in terms of update with Southwood Hospital, my update is that we received. As I mentioned to you before, the planning. Grant to look at four ER. Versus forty B. For multifamily housing there, GFI had reached out to the town. And asked. Why not just investigate and pursue a forty R district? As opposed to looking at. You know, a planning study. And actually. There's still planning and there's still work involved with the forty R district, but not look at, you know, essentially. Pursue forty R if it makes sense and it, it. Goes through the planning process, which then has to go to town meeting. It was voted on, voted on by townspeople, why not go that route as opposed to. A planning study that might say, hey, you should go forty R. As versus forty B, if you go forty B, you can go forty B, it's not necessarily. Per se, a lot of planning, so. I reached out to the state and I believe I will have something back to you in terms of that they're okay with making this shift. Which I think is a positive. Terms of that site.
Now, are, are you talking about a forty R district for the complete site or just a portion of it?
It could be the complete side or portion there, that's kind of the, that, that would be the work that we'd be doing through the process.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that, that, there is, I mean, there are things going on in environmental, I think, I believe we put in the folder. The, there was comments from the PIP group, which was forwarded to the DEP, which. I think Betsy already put up on the town website. And there was comments in terms of the DEP commenting to the LSP. In the phase two work that they need to address. So that is ongoing right now. As well. And I don't know if anybody. That, that's kind of the extent of my update.
All right. Okay. Are there any other new business tonight? I don't hear any, okay, next meeting, I don't know whether we'll be in face to face or on Zoom, it'll depend, I suppose, on. What the. Situation is with COVID. There's a lot of talk about the fact that, that this Omicron wave is going to peak in January and. And trickle down thereafter. Ending sometime in February, so maybe we'll be able to meet face to face, other than that, we'll do it by Zoom, but. We'll play it by ear as we get closer to the meeting date.
Well, tech, technically, your next meeting is, is Zoom, which is January twenty-sixth, which is a. A presentation from DPW regarding this sidewalk ADA self evaluation plan.
Yeah, yeah, I'm referring to the, the next planning board meeting. But I, I take your point. Okay. Anything else that you want to talk about other than a motion to adjourn?
Just a quick one, only because I missed and I saw it on the video, the Pulte issue is completely resolved, that's been signed off and the bonds returned. With, in, in place of the new bond?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, with that, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Our favorite today, aye, aye.
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 Aye, 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 okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks everyone, I'm good.
Thank you.